Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming to the City of Mableton City Council Meeting. It is May 12th. Thank you for everyone for being here with us this evening. We're going to go ahead and get this meeting started. We just wrapped up a city council work session. We're going to roll that now right into our general meeting. So with that said, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:44. Yes, we did have a different additional start time or different start time. I just want to say at the beginning because we will not be having a meeting this coming Wednesday. This is a combined meeting that we put the work session and the regular meeting together. So we handle all the business of the city tonight. No meeting again on Wednesday. With that being said, Madam Clerk, would you please call to roll?
Yes, Mayor Owens.
Present.
Councilmember of District 1, Lauren Davis.
Present.
Councilmember of District 2, Dani Oladope.
Present.
Councilmember of District 3, Mayor Protem, Kisha Jeffcoat.
Present.
Councilmember of District 4, Patricia Alk.
Present.
And Councilmember of District 5, TJ Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember of District 6, Deborah Herden.
Present.
Quan Present.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. Councilman Davis, will you lead us in the invocation, please?
Yes, let's bow. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord. We praise and honor your name, Father. We just pray right now that you continue to guide us as we move this city. Father, we just pray right now that you keep us, Father God. Make all of our decisions be filled with wisdom, your wisdom, and wisdom that will bring this city to where you would have it to be. So we just thank you right now in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this point in time, if you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask our Mayor Protem, an Army veteran, to please lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our councilor will often provide a copy of the Pledge of Allegiance prior to this meeting. What I would like to ask, however, there was one item that was left over from our work session that we would like to get back onto this agenda to be heard this evening. And just for clarity's sake, that was previous item 3C, which is the Special Service District for Six Flags. That was going to be had by Director R.D. Jones and our attorney. So I'd like to ask for, entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the SSD discussion to be added to item 7 on the current agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the presentation for the Special Service Districts to number seven.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of approval of the agenda with the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. With that being said, we do not have any public hearings tonight, so we're going to move straight to item 7, which will be Director Jones's, yes, for the Special Service District presentation. I told you we're going to have you wait in long.
Agreed. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, sir.
And guests. On this evening, we were going to have a presentation on the Special Services District for the Six Flags area. There was a presentation that was just provided on this item just, I guess, four weeks ago now. Where staff is coming to you with a request with direction, and I'm just going to ask you three simple questions at the end of the presentation. I'm going to go over a brief presentation. I told the city manager earlier I could have got through it in five minutes, but he didn't believe me because it was about 15 slides. But I know that you guys are on top of things and you were very attentive and asked some really good questions during the last presentation. So I'll go ahead and start things off, and as I go through this presentation also, City Attorney Amelia Walker will also participate.
No, she won't.
Okay. The first, this particular Special Services District was started in 2017 by Cobb County. It leveraged a 3.5 mils tax on commercial properties only. It generated about $1.7 million up to 2024, and this particular district is going to sunset at the end of this month on May 31st. Now, these particular funds can only be used within the district, and they have to be used for targeted particular services. And it's not citywide, but this district is only in the City of Mableton. It's to support economic development and infrastructure improvements, and at the same time, enhance public safety and maintenance in the defined area within the Special Services District. Next slide. Within this presentation, I'm going to define the purpose and the scope of the Special Services District. Talk to you, Ms. Walker. Ashby will talk to you about the legal authority and the framework. Putting this particular district together, there was a lot of community engagement where there were meetings held to get feedback into the boundaries of this district. We also have to come up with a financial planning impact analysis within the district. This was already done, and we have to adopt an ordinance which Ms. Walker can speak to. And then also, we will talk about the implementation and administering of the Special Services District, and also how we are going to coordinate with the county and state agencies. Next slide. The purpose. The purpose, as I mentioned earlier, this is about providing public services, additional services within a special area, and also infrastructure improvements. And then also, to clearly define the boundaries of the district. Next slide. We have to make sure that we're compliant with Georgia laws for the Special Services District, which this particular district has been set up since 2017, so there's no issues with it. But we want to reestablish it, and we want to also work with the city attorney to address, I guess, to draft an ordinance, which that particular item was within your agenda packet. Next slide. I'm not sure if it's required at this time, but this might be, this may be considered a public meeting as far as holding public meetings for this particular district. But we are, we want, on this evening, we want to find out from the city council if you allow us to, do we need to do additional public meetings for listening sessions? Or would this particular meeting constitute that? My understanding from the first presentation that was provided by the Mableton Development Authority is that since this was already, this district was already set up, that we would not necessarily have to go through those public meetings because it was already set up. But we are reestablishing a brand-new district for the City of Mableton. But it would just be under the auspices of the City of Mableton and not under the county, Cobb County. Next slide. I talked to you about the budget. Whenever you have these districts set up, you usually, on an annual basis, you will have a budget that's set up to be able to identify where the funding would be used within the Special Services District. And at the same time, we, whenever you set these districts up, they evaluate the taxes that would be levied within the district. Since this district has already been in existence, it's almost like I'm talking about it, you know, into the future, but we know what it's going to levy because right now, we understand what the boundaries are. Next slide. This is where Ms. Walker Ashby would talk about, she's going to allow you to ask her any questions about presenting the ordinance. That particular item was within your agenda packet. And then, once you adopt the ordinance, which we're not asking you to do on this evening, but once you adopt this ordinance, that will formally establish the Special Services District. Next slide. Now, with this particular Special Services District, since it was set up by Cobb County, Cobb County collected the taxes on the Special Services District. From my understanding, Cobb County does not collect taxes for any city. All the cities collect their own taxes. So if we're going to take over this Special Services District and have our own, more than likely, we're going to have to collect those taxes ourself. The Finance Director could probably go into more detail on what that would be, but I'm just giving you guys a head up that if we are going to have the Special Services District, that's more than likely, this would be something that we will have to collect ourselves. Of course, we're going to work with Cobb County and the Georgia Department of Community Affairs to make sure that this Special Services District is set up appropriately. And then we'll also register the Special Services District with all the regional plans that we have, and this will also be a part of our comprehensive plan to be adopted, I believe, next summer or late spring. Next slide. Now, the question that we have for council, and we just need some type of consent, not necessarily a formal vote. Is the Special Services District for Six Flags something that council wants us to move forward with actually establishing? I feel that it is something that you guys want to establish because the services that are actually being paid for within the Special Services District, if it's not paid for with the Special Services District, it would have to be paid for through the general fund. But that's the first question that we have, that I would like to have the city council to think of. The second question is, would you like for the boundaries of the new Special Services District to remain the same as the current Special Services District? If that is the case, if the boundaries are going to change sometime between now and the next meeting, we would work with you guys to find out where those boundaries are going to change, and then we would have to do a recalculation on those additional or fewer properties that would be in that Special Services District, so we'd find out what that financial impact is. And the third question is, and this is something I mentioned earlier, is that with the Special Services District, the county collected the taxes in the past. If the City of Mableton is to have set up this Special Services District under our authority, we would have to actually collect those taxes ourself. So staff needs direction from council or consensus to move forward to do what we need to do to be able to collect that, those taxes in-house, or find a contractor or some organization to be able to collect those taxes for us. So it's three questions. Do you guys want to move forward with the Special Services District? Second question is, do you want the boundaries to stay the same? And the third is, if there's an affirmative to the first two questions, would you guys like for us to move forward with, you know, doing what we need to do to be able to collect those taxes? I'll address any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have a visual, I'm sorry. Do you have a visual of the current boundaries?
Do I actually have another visual showing with you guys, and then you'll address that?
Okay.
So, well, hold on. Before we get to those questions, do you have more to add?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then, then go ahead before we start addressing the questions.
Is Mayor and Council, page 60 on your work session agenda? Did we pull this from the work session agenda? Everybody, I see you, not on your air. Can you see right along?
Sorry about that.
The resolution?
The resolution?
Yeah, it's the work session agenda, page 60, and it starts, "Resolution of the City of Mableton, Georgia, Creating."
Resolution creating Mableton Six Flags Special Service District? I pulled it up. I don't, am I missing pages? Because I only see like seven pages.
Seven.
It's the work session.
Yes, where was that?
Yeah, I just pulled up the resolution. No, there's six, I think she's, you're in the agenda packet?
Yes, I'm in the agenda packet.
You're in the whole packet, like in the top.
Yeah, so she's looking at the whole packet as page 60 versus.
Oh, 125.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay.
Page 60 of 125. Which looks like the resolution.
Yeah, I'm just looking directly at.
Yeah, I did the same thing. She's good.
Yeah, I think, go ahead.
Okay.
Please proceed.
So Mayor and Council, this is just to give you a visual depiction of what your Special Service District would look like if you implement it. And I just want to give a reminder that this would not be a tax increase. This would just be a continuation of an existing assessment that's made for improvement purposes for this particular area. So this would create the Six Flags Special District, so essentially, under the Georgia Constitution, Article 9, Section 2, Paragraph 6, it gives local governments the authority and the power to create Special Service Districts. This would be an ad valorem tax. The county created this back in 2014 for the Six Flags area. So if you continued it, this would be likely, unless you asked me to make revisions to this, this would be substantially similar to what this continuation would look like. If you scroll through the whereas clauses, there's just a lot of whereas clauses, and those give the, and actually, this was created by the county in 2016. I might have said 14. But if you scroll down, you'll see, you can read through the whereas, it's just kind of like the history, whatnot, your authority to implement this. Section 1 is the definition sections. So essentially, it names, defines what the district would be, the Six Flags Area Special Services District. That name is identical to what it's called now, and it would make it, my proposal was to leave the name identical just because residents, particularly those residents who assess this are familiar, and they know what that means when they see it on their tax bills. So if you go down to, and when we refer to service tax or tax within here, it is referring to that assessment. So if you go down to Section 2, Section 2 would be where you establish the tax. And to Councilwoman Jeffcoat's question, inquiry, what would be, is there a map? Yes, there will be a map. If you look at Section 2, there's, I've identified Exhibits A and B. A is a parcel listing of all the parcels that are within the district. B is the map. Now, we reached out to the tax assessor. We had a, excuse me, the city manager, myself, the tax assessor staff, as well as the tax commissioner, we had a conference call. We had a group Zoom conference about, about three weeks ago, I would say, where we approached and we just gave them a heads up that this is something that the city will likely continue, subject to approval by the council. We gave them a heads up that the request would be for a reasonable rate for the county to actually do the invoicing and collection. One, because they already had the mechanisms and the process in place. It's already a line item on the tax invoice, and then they could just put this on the bill as all previous years, and then when it's collected, the money would just be distributed to the city, subject to a fee. They did not reject the ideal, but of course, they just wanted to confirm some items with the county attorney's office. Specifically, they wanted to confirm what date they would technically end the assessment, because everyone wasn't, everyone with the county wasn't updated on the fact that the county would end their assessment. If you remember when we had our SDS negotiations preliminary with the county, the county put up a slide just indicating that as of this year, they do plan to. Well, they do plan to end it because legally, they're just required to do so, but they did communicate that to everyone in attendance, so. So there is opportunity to further negotiate for the county to collect. And the good part is that I've spoken to Bill, and I know that we have staff in-house who is more than capable to, more than capable of handling the assessment internally if needed. If needed would be if the county just says no, or if needed would be if the county wants to charge a rate that you find unreasonable, and that you could do it in a more cost-effective means in-house to be able to retain a larger percentage of the revenue that comes in for the rehabilitation of that area. So what I've done is, we had that conversation with the tax entities about three to four weeks ago. And what I did is, last week, I contacted them again because I was able to pull the 2016 implementation that the county did. It included a map as well as the parcel listing, and I've asked them, both departments, to assist us with updating the parcel listing, because obviously, between now and 2016, addresses have changed, parcel numbers have likely changed. So they are in the process of preparing a updated listing for the district, and I've asked them to confine it to exclusively just Mableton. So to the extent it is currently in the county's district and it's within Mableton's boundaries, that's the information that I've asked them for. My understanding is it is exclusively within Mableton, but I just, for clarification purposes, I asked them, we only, or I told them, whatever you give us, please just let it be limited to the City of Mableton. Then I also asked for a map, if their systems would produce a map relative to that data, which it seemed to be something that they can do because they copied GIS on my request. But I do know that we do have in-house GIS staff now, too. So if there's a problem creating a map on the counties' end, we should be able to easily get that put in place. So we should have that map and that parcel data to you as soon as we can get it to you, with the assistance and the help of the county, tax assessor, as well as the county tax commissioner, who I will say have been just tremendous to work with. They've been polite, cordial, ready to help. I'm just, I can't sing enough of their praises with the assistance that they provided throughout your transition as far as the tax assessor and the tax commissioner's office. So if you go to the special tax, you'll see in here that it's set at 3.5 mils, which is consistent with what the county set the mils as. It's probably not consistent. It's a little bit lower than what newer. It's a little bit lower than what newer cities are setting their mill as. Like, for example, Brookhaven in 2021 assessed a special service district similar, similarly, and I think they set theirs at either four or four point five, but I know for sure it was in the fours. So my, I've left it at three point five here, just because the residents in this area are familiar with that amount, and just for consistency purposes. But you do have the authority to set it at whatever amount that you find to be reasonable. So if you scroll down, too, it says, Services, Tax Proceeds, Tax Proceeds. This lists the type of services that you would, that you would implement and continue to implement with this tax. And I'll just name some of those services. It includes nuisance abatement, acquisition of properties for infrastructure and redevelopment, blight remediation, parks, recreational areas, open space, street and road construction and maintenance, landscapes, streetscapes, interchanges, pedestrian thoroughfare, streetlights, traffic control devices, et cetera. It also lists a number of projects that you may do. You're not required, but I just listed them out of caution, because they were in the initial plan that the county had prepared for this back in 2016. And those include property acquisition, property abatement, relocation assistance for redevelopment purposes, for land preparation, installation of finding, installation of wayfinding, gateway signage, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that are listed here. So one of the requirements of setting this district is that the money that is pulled from the district has to be put back into the district. And that's what it essentially says, is out of fairness and equity, the people who are paying for this specifically for this purpose need to be the one to primarily benefit from it.
Isn't there already some that is earmarked for stuff and has to be used specifically?
No, there is absolutely no earmark. This would be a continuation, but it would be your baby, essentially. So you can do whatever you want, as far as its growth and maturity. You would be under no obligation to continue, resume, any intended purpose that was in the county's special service district for this area. And the county does, the county is actually, I think they're holding, about what, six million? I know they're holding.
It's like six point four million, something like that?
I thought it was four point three.
And then, there was a second, a portion of it that, I wish we had the slides that they.
Yeah, on the slides that they presented, I know it's, it sounds like it might be anywhere in the range of four to six million. But they are holding funds that they do plan to implement and continue some of the services that they advise that they would intend for that purpose.
That number is a lot smaller. It's $720,000 that they're currently holding, that they can spend project dollars that they have, to spend on projects. And that, that's at their direction, but that's money that was already collected that we have.
Yeah, and that's correct. So that would be completely their discretion, their direction. If you establish this, all the money that comes in through this would be similarly at your discretion and direction. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, so it looks like they are holding, it says, amount outstanding as of January first, and this is with their revenue bonds. So similar to the bonds that you did with the URA, the county also did bonds. And it looks like they have, from the revenue bond debt, it looks like it's six point three million, approx. And then the project funds that are remaining, I think it's the amount that the mayor just indicated, it's the $765,858.
I think it's important to note, though, that, that those numbers do not directly pertain to what we're doing here. Those, those numbers are established, that's bond debt that the county has, and those are funds, that $765,000 is funds that they have, that, in all fairness, is the county's money. They have to spend it in this, in the existing district. But that, that money and those funds will be directed to spend how the county chooses. They may take some of our input, or may take some of the community's input, but that is, that is their funds to, again, has to be spent within the district, but it's their funds to be spent. I do, there is, there is somewhat of a duality here. It is, yes, it is net new to Artie's questions, but to the attorney's point, it is very much an existing tax that has been in place for over a decade now. So do you have anything else, Madam Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. So because I put the actual assessment in here, which is the three point five mil, when you adopt this, you'll have to go through the military process, and that is something that finance will be able to easily assist you with. But you'll have to have, of course, military hearings on this. And then upon those hearings, you'll be able to adopt this. And fortunately, that gives us more time. Hopefully, the, the tax assessor's office committed to reporting back to us this week, just following up on the status of our request. So that gives us time, not only to look at whatever data they're able to provide, but have a follow-up conversation on the collection issue.
Sure.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney. Thank you, Director Jones. I think, as it relates to directly addressing the question, I think there was a fourth question, which was, what should the millage be? So do we want to establish this? Again, it's, it's not really establishing. It is, technically, but this is really a continuation for a tax that's been in place for roughly ten years. I think it's definitely needed. The Six Flags corridor and district, if you look at the map there, it's still largely a lot of the industrial area below I-20. And so, and Six Flags itself, actually, is part of that district. It does have a little bit of the Riverside corridor, which obviously needs continued help and needs funding, I think, going into that area. So it's something that I, I personally am definitely in support of continuing, continuing that through a newly established SSD. I don't see the sense in changing the millage at this point in time. I, I respect the fact that it is ten years old, and a lot of the newer millages are higher. But I'm under the frame of mind that until we can actually have an assessment that would say we needed more funds for that district, to keep the consistency that we currently have with the three point five millage. Similarly, I don't see a need to change the boundaries. If you look at the actual boundaries, again, it's largely below I-20. That area is, is ninety-nine point five percent industrial. There's literally one trailer park in there, and I think two individual, single-family homes. If you go above twenty, it does cover some of that Riverside corridor again. But because this tax is exclusive to commercial entities, it mainly, you're looking at the heavy industrial that's below I-20, as well as Six Flags being impacted by this. So I don't see a need in, in changing that, changing those boundaries. And as it relates to the tax collection, there's, I know that there's been discussion, we've had discussion with, with that. But I think to the, to the council, if this is something that the county could provide, I would be in support of them doing the collection and notification. But I think we need to, A, know if that's something they're willing to do, and B, how much they would actually charge for it. If we could do it in-house or outsource it cheaper, I mean, this is simply levying a tax and doing a notification and collection thereof. As long as the quality of the service is there, I don't particularly have, it doesn't matter to me a lot who does it. I think if the county has been doing this all the way up, literally till this year, if we get them to continue that at a decent amount of money, I would be in support of that, as, as long as, again, it's, it's at a, at a rate that we would find attractive. So that covers my questions. Counsel, I'd like to open it up for your comments around these items. Counsel, what?
I agree with the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
She said she disagreed with me.
The one question I have is, if timing does not work in our favor, and we come up on May thirty-first, or May twenty-eighth, and we don't have all of this straightened out, what, what's next?
So, so there is, there's a little, what I would consider some consternation right now, because the county had prepared, it seemed like they were preparing to collect the tax, but then Bill Vogtman, the Cobb County CFO, said, oh, we can't collect the tax. So, so quite frankly, I'm not sure, because I don't know where the county is in this process. I mean, they've made it clear that they're not going to, even though they had it slated to, correct? So that was part of my thing, was if they had already planned on doing it.
Right.
If they could go ahead and do it, we would.
But the tax is due on June first.
No.
No, that was, that's when, no.
That's just the effective date that I made, this tax year.
Yes.
When the tax bills go out.
Tax bills go out in August, August fifteenth, or something like that. There's, there's time. I think the big question, though, is logistics around if this is something the county could do, and how much they would charge.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please, sir.
Either May twenty-eighth or May thirty-first is really slightly irrelevant. The tax year is January first, and on January first, those parcels were taken off of the unincorporated roster and put into the incorporated roster, which is the city of Mableton Six Flags Special Service District. So no other municipality can collect in another municipality's district. So that eliminated the county from doing it. Now, if we do not have one established, we can't collect either. I think that's the direction Mr. Artie Jones wants to get as official, and I think he's getting that guidance from this council for him and the city attorney to proceed with doing the official setup. The time, if you are interested, Mr. Ferguson, would be sending out the notice time, and then two dates. Typically, I believe Cobb does a August notification and an October collection. We would love to, as the mayor and the city attorney has explained, be on that notification for October, so it's really seamless, and then have a, a collection in October. But if not, we're going to look at this on our side through finance's office, perhaps a October notification and a December collection, so that there's no confusion. But May twenty-eighth, May thirty-first, just really is that, the relationship, I believe, with the South Cobb, or what it's now, Mableton Belt and Authority, and whatever the county had, that, that all is officially, the, I guess they had an agreement or some contract that eventually ends, but it doesn't put us in a factor where we have to hit a deadline. We don't want to wait until next year. And we want to do it before, I would want to do it soon.
Do, Madam Attorney, do we have an idea what the county is, when, we could expect to either know if they could do it, and if so, how much they would charge us to do it? And then, and in a couple of that, Mr. Manager, do we have an idea of the cost to do that in-house?
Karen's team has already began assessing what it would take, and in a short software, a collection software, a notification software, and then the rest is just an accountant putting money in and making sure we collect it and account for it properly. So it's really staff, software, same thing the county's doing, except they got a large tax department.
My, my question comes in effect, because we need to know a date from the county, so our finance team will have time to purchase software, get it implemented.
Right.
And, and get prepared, get notices out by mid-August. That's only, that's ninety days.
BSNA just wants you to get some training to get us up to date. You're going to have to answer with us during, hopefully, this week, with some quotes on how much it's going to cost.
So could you repeat that, please?
So, so we had some meetings with BSNA regarding training and acting to the, I mean, addition and additional property tax module, which is something we can add on. And we hope to get an answer from them this week, if not the latest next week, on what that cost would be to add that module and incorporate it, and how quickly they can get it running.
So you should have that in the next week or so?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As soon as the assessor's office follows up this week, I'm going to request a supplemental meeting, so that we can have their attorneys present. We can discuss the actual collection date, as well as, you know, whether they're willing to collect.
Okay.
So we should know that, hopefully, within the next ten days.
All right, counsel. Any other questions, or any other thoughts about the questions proposed by Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, do you need any kind of, like, for clear direction, or do we need to take a vote or anything, or do you feel like you have adequate direction, or?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I'm glad you asked that question. Mayor, as I said, this is not an official vote.
Right.
But I think we've heard from two people.
Well, you know what absence is.
No, I'm, I'm aligned with, with the mayor.
That's three. I got a consensus somewhat.
And I'm aligned. Go for it, sir. Go for it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And, and so on this piece, you're, we're going to come back with a updated resolution or something.
We're getting ready to execute. The city attorney has an illegal portion, we have a research portion, information. When we come back to you, we're going to come back with a plan that we're getting ready to implement. And that'll be the city attorney working with Mr. Artie Jones, and of course, our finance department. They'll have feedback from the county on whether they're going to support us or not. Our finance department will have feedback on what it's going to take, what's the cost. And then Mr. Artie, obviously, would be on the economic development, kind of overseeing that, that district for kind of management, so to speak.
And then that'll be presented at the next meeting?
That's okay. Yes, ma'am.
So it sounds like, though, we have to have another one in between?
Another meeting?
Yes.
No, you don't need another meeting. So you don't have a June first deadline on this. The deadline is having the county commit to whether they will collect or not before their notices go out. Because they have pre-notices that go out, and then they have the actual notices that go out in August, and then they have the collection efforts. So the first question is going to be, will you collect? And if so, let's negotiate the rate. If we are not able to negotiate a reasonable rate, then the next question to the county will be, how quickly do we need to get necessary paperwork to you for you to at least tuck this in your outgoing invoices, so that everything's given to the taxpayer at the same time? And then whatever we tuck in their invoices will have the direction as, as far as how we'd like the residents to make payment.
I, I just want to be very, very clear. The SSD one-pager that is in the packet specifically states that the current SSD established by Cobb County is set to sunset on May thirty-first, 2025. So my question continues to be, what happens on May thirty-first if we have not enacted this ordinance?
Since this is being recorded, I'm going to say this as diplomatically as I can.
Oh, I wouldn't, like, I'm sorry.
There was some miscommunication from certain parties on what needs to happen and what was happening. And in our research, with myself and the city attorney, we found out that certain people were not communicating with each other. And consequently, that May thirty or twenty-eighth day really means nothing to this city.
Okay.
It meant something to someone in, in one department, and then when we talked to another department, it was a moot point. The fact is, whether the county thought they could or not, as of January first, there was not legally authorized to collect tax in the city. And some may have thought they could.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that concludes this portion, and we will move on to Item eight, which is appointments. There's one appointment that we have for this evening, and that is a Board, a Board of Zoning Appeals appointment. That's actually my appointee that was not made last time. Counsel, I'm sure you've seen the information in the packet. That is, my appointee is Mr. Jogi Ebbes. Many of y'all may be familiar with him. He is, he works in the housing arena. He's a former employee at the Atlanta Housing Authority, as well as Department of Community Affairs. He's also at the Housing Authority in DeKalb County as well. So he is my appointee. I do not believe he's here this evening, but anybody got any questions about the appointee?
We have questions.
Hearing no, hearing no questions, I will go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of appointing Jogi Ebbes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no oppositions, the ayes have it. Mr. Ebbes is now formally a member of the zoning board of appeals. Madam Clerk, could you please make sure to reach out to him, let him know the results of this action tonight, and that he can join his fellow. join his fellow members on the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Uh, I, I do want, if I may, a point of clarification. There is one thing, Mr. Ferguson. There's a landscape contract that was under the Mableton Development Authority that takes care of the I-20 gateway. That would no longer happen after May 28th, but that doesn't affect when and where we set and collect tax. But this requirement, and that's a detail myself and Mr. Jones will have to work out because it's required that that area is maintained and it was being handled by the Mableton Development Authority. Uh, and the contract is with the old group. So we may have to establish a new contract.
But I thought I saw that in a budget that was $50,000 set aside.
Yes, sir. We just got to get another.
So then that's, that would cover it unless some expenses need to be paid before the budget's approved.
Right. It's still inconsequential, but it is that one thing we do to make sure that's continued. Because that, if there was a landscaping contract, that may officially end on that date. And that's something we just have to.
Do you know what it's paid through?
I think it was, uh, Mableton Development Authority was paying it and it was, and it may not. You're right. We have to decide. I think we've already, like you said, as you already indicated, we've kind of already said, here's another 50,000 to handle that.
Right.
So we just got to make sure it continues if there's an agreement and, and that it's now reflected that we're going to continue that.
But how long do we expect that 50 to last?
That annual contract was like 40.
It's an, it's an annual 50,000?
It was like annual 40, but we knew it's about annual, it's about 40,000.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that, though. Um, so let's move on to our public comment section. Madam Clerk, do you have any comment cards this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I have two. Uh, the first person is Nick Demundi and then we have Cassandra Brown.
Thank you.
And there's a two-minute time limit.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, folks.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, counsel. Folks, I want to do, first of all, thank you for your continued support on us pushing back on the bus depot. That is literally in my backyard in Councilwoman Alk's district. We're continuing to make a stand and that's as far as we can go right now. But I appreciate the mayor's support when he came out last year and Councilwoman Alk as well. Um, I do want to bring up something I brought up last time is the Mabel House sign. I would love to see the, uh, city council meetings put on the Mabel House sign for the, the amphitheater, just to have that in the rotation. I think that would be good. Just communication, get more community, uh, community engagement, um, for the town. What I did want to speak about today is, uh, the need, the pressing need for, um, a comprehensive rental ordinance for Mableton. There's, the short-term rentals are cropping up like a blight across our city. Uh, rentals are great, but rentals that take advantage of people are not great. And a city whose roots are shallow and wide and not, none of them go down, uh, is a city without a community. And it's not where anyone wants to live. So in my neighborhood, which is pretty much blue collar, um, there's been an influx of short-term rentals owned by companies that are shell corporations in the Bahamas. One of them is in Nevada, but it's actually owned by a place in Brazil. A lot of opacity with that. And there's a, because of that, there is a lot of, uh, grift and taking advantage of. For instance, I know this is recorded, two, uh, houses down from me, short-term renter, bought the house. It just got busted by Cobb County PD for running a prostitution ring out of it. Okay. So I have, I have two kids under the age of five. I'm not okay with that. And that, and that's not an isolated incident. So I'm, I'm encouraging the council and the mayor's office to hold the torch for that. The more I speak about it at these meetings, the more people come up to me and say, yes, this is a problem. Because we want people, we want Mableton to have deep, deep roots. Um, and I know I use kind of colorful language describing it as a blight. I'll stand on that and I think the data will prove that, uh, as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cassandra Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel, everyone. Uh, I'm Cassandra Brown. I'm, uh, live in District Four and I'm here with the Mableton Improvement Coalition today. Um, Nick, uh, actually just spoke about the same topic that I want to address today, which is regarding the school, uh, Bus Depot fueling station at 440 Veterans Memorial Highway. So, um, at this point, I know we have, uh, spoken, uh, multiple times about the issue. I know that there's been some contact with, um, the, the mayor and, um, with the Board of Education, but, um, there has not been any movement. And at this point, uh, it does feel as if , uh, that they're going to probably move forward with this. And with that in mind, what I am asking today is that the mayor and, um, uh, Ms. Alk, who's, um, District Four, uh, councilperson, uh, consider our best interests and the wishes of the community. So if the fueling station is going to be located there, that you all engage and work with the Board of Education to ensure that we have a plan that will, um, have them, uh, you know, put this in in such a way that, um, it will be as little impact as possible, also considering aesthetics, um, and things of that nature. Um, so again, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
No more cards.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. All right, counsel, item 10 is our consent agenda. There's two items on the consent agenda. The first one is consideration and approval of a resolution to adopt the City of Mableton's sustainability policies and standards. Sustainability Waste and Beautification Director Emily Groth has put this item forward. Uh, the second item is consideration approval of a resolution promoting the adoption of electric vehicle use within our community, uh, put forth by, um, our sustainability director as well. Uh, and any questions about these items?
I did have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, no. Oh.
Go ahead. Go for it.
I just had a quick question. So there, there have been some inquiries as to whether our sustainability policy will have any teeth behind it because a little, a lot of the language says we'll endeavor to or, you know, things like that. So where would we actually establish something where something is actually mandatory?
Sure.
Or will we be doing that where something is mandatory so that there can be some support behind the overall policy?
Thank you. And I know, uh, there's, there's been questions around that. What we've attempted to do is start at a very grand level of, of really stating who we are and what we care about and what's important. And you do that through, um, resolutions largely. Um, I've, I've talked before about our EV 2035 and green city initiatives. What's happening behind the scenes though, what you will start to see is, um, ordinances and specific policies to come out of that, uh, that will also drive our green initiatives and also EV 2035, but in a way that there will be actual ordinances, i.e. city laws that will come into play. So we're establishing kind of this larger framework, but there will be specific ordinances that will, that will be kind of, that the idea is if, if you agree with the framework, the larger adoption, then you will agree with the actual laws that come behind them.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, with that being said, uh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, my, um, only question had to do with our, uh, the green fleet policy. And since we've discussed fleets tonight and it was mentioned before, possibly looking at hybrids, uh, vehicles, um, I noticed in the green fleet policy, it, it mentions that, um, we're committed to 100% all-electric. It doesn't, it mentions hybrid, but only if the cost of EVs costs more than 60% of the price of a similar rated gas-powered hybrid alternative. I was wondering if this would tie our hands. If, if we just find that a hybrid is more affordable or more budget-friendly, would this, uh, have an impact on that?
Great question. I think there's twofold there. One is the, is the ethos that we're going to have 100% electric fleet, uh, which is nothing new to the city. I think it's more than aspirational. I think it's something that we're proving already that we can do. But also I think there's an out there that says, hey, if the total cost of ownership for a gas vehicle really outweighs that of electric, then there is an option and it is in there. Um, but it does put the threshold pretty high, right? Because I think it's been proven through the reduction of cost of maintenance ongoing, uh, as well as a reduction in, in, um, the carbon footprint, the advantages we're gaining. Plus it puts us further and closer to the green city initiatives of the certification that we're looking as well. So there is an out there, but I do admit the threshold is high because I think it should be high. Um, but there is an out there.
So just to piggyback off of that, the next paragraph down then says, the city's no idling policy will be enforced for all vehicles. So does that?
Say it again. I'm sorry. I missed it.
The city's no idling policy.
Yes.
Will be enforced for all vehicles.
Yes. So electric vehicles don't idle. So it would only come into effect if you had a hybrid vehicle, which should not idle either. The engine should go off.
Uh, it's just very definitive language. All fleet vehicles are managed by the city. Yeah. It's just very definitive.
I, as I think it should be, that the vast majority of wasted fuel and pollution happens when people are idle.
Get it.
So there's room for definitive statement there. Any other questions, counsel? Hearing none, uh, we'll, uh, call the question or at least entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition. Ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move, uh, to new business. We don't have any unfinished business this evening. Uh, the first item of new business evening is consideration approval for the mayor to negotiate and sign substantial form professional services agreement with Malden and Jenkins LLC for the financial audit services. Uh, members of the council, this is for $95,000. It's for five successive annual renewals, ending with the FY 2029 audit. Um, as you guys know, this is, uh, a requirement for us, but also something that we wanted to put forward to ensure that we have a strong financial, uh, audit trail. By doing this is, I think there's also some savings that is meant by doing this over five years instead of having to do, um, uh, an, an annual contract on this. And again, that is for $95,000. Um, would you like to speak to this, Director Ellis?
Good evening again, Mayor and counsel. Um, this item, I did provide an agenda memo which kind of summarizes the audit proposal that we put out, but, um, also it's very important for the finance department to have a consistency which kind of piggybacks what the mayor was saying for a five-year. That's why we do it that way, to have a consistent staff to make the audit go smoothly, someone that understands how the city works so that it can be a, a successful audit. So, but it is over five years.
I have a quick question because, um, my mind is not, um, understanding fully. So the 94,000 for five, is, is it 94,000 each year?
No.
Or it's nine, okay.
Yeah. So it's, and it's tiered. So there is a schedule. Um, we just had the, uh, city attorney, she did review the agreement. So you will see that because it will need to be signed. I believe the first year is 17,850 and then I think it's again the same and then it goes up a little bit. Uh, and there will be an additional charge in the event that the city does have, uh, the need for a single audit, which means you hit a certain threshold with grant money, that kind of, or federal funding, um, which we aren't there yet, but there would, that would be additional addendum to this agreement if that was needed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, counsel? Um, Madam Attorney, as a matter of record, um, this is a five-year or it says five successive annual renewals, not necessarily a five-year contract. So is this a five-year contract or is this an annual contract with renewals?
That is what I was actually looking for now because if it's not, we will have to convert it to.
Right. That's why I'm asking.
I will say this particular firm works with a lot of local governments. So I'm quite sure that they, um, it's written. Uh, they're pretty well-known in the, in the local government space. So I'm quite sure whatever needs to be done, they've done it. They.
Yeah, I have it pulled up. Yeah, on my laptop. Yeah. Yes, it's, it's, it doesn't clarify, but the way that we have this on the agenda is not that we'll execute it, but you have the ability to finalize.
Okay.
Um, but that is something that we will need to just make sure there's clarity, there's, there's clarity on here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure. That's why I'm asking. So, um, anyway, I don't, I don't think it impedes us from moving forward because we do still have the ability to negotiate and change as necessary. Um, with that being said, counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, to approve, uh, the mayor negotiating, signing substantial form professional service agreement with Malden and Jenkins for financial services, uh, in the amount of $94,500.
I'd like to make a motion for the consideration and approval for the mayor to negotiate and sign in substantial form, the professional services agreement with Malden and Jenkins LLC for financial audit services in the amount of $94,500 for five successive annual rev, renewals, ending with the FY 2029 audit.
Thank you, ma'am. Motion's been made, um, and duly seconded by Councilwoman Herndon. I'll call the question if there's no discussion on this matter further. Hearing none. Um, all those in favor of the motion made by Councilwoman Jeffcoat, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition. Ayes have it. Thank you. We'll move on to item 12B. Item 12B is actually a second read is to consideration approval of ordinance enhancing code enforcement operations. It updates chapter two, the administration creating a new article for, for the City of Mableton Code of Ordnances. Um, Director Farrell, floor is yours, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Uh, we would like to take on the second read and take your vote if that allows us to establish this, as stated in our last, uh, meeting, uh, the code enforcement department and all the enforcement capabilities of the ordinances that you established throughout the city that allows us to enforce and proceed through the process of adjudication.
Thank you, sir. Um, Madam Clerk, has any changes been made to this ordinance since it had the first read?
No, there has not been any changes.
Oh, thank you. Um, counsel, any questions or comments? Okay.
Okay. Wait, which one?
Let's proceed.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance for enhancing code enforcement operations, updating chapter two administrative, creating new article for the City of Mableton Code of Ordnances and for other lawful purposes.
I second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor of the approval of the motion by Councilwoman Alk, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There's no opposition. Ayes have that. We will move straight on into items 12C, which is consideration approval of ordinance creating chapter 13, which is the nuisance article, or nuisance article three, um, covering the noise for the City of Mableton's ordinances. Uh, Director Farrell, this is yours as well.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mayor, again. We would like to have your, your approval of this ordinance in regards to noise as it degrades the quality of life for all citizens. And as you know, we want to improve the quality of life and a vote of yes would, uh, appeal to that with our department as well.
Thank you for that, sir. Um, Madam Attorney or Clerk, has any changes made to this?
No. No.
None. Counsel, no changes have been made to this ordinance since the last read. Um, with that being the case, I'll go ahead and call, uh, I'll actually entertain a motion to, um, approve this order, this ordinance creating chapter 13 for nuisances.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance creating chapter 13 nuisances, article three noise in the City of Mableton Code of Ordnances and for other lawful purposes.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
You got it.
One of you. I don't care. All right, Councilwoman Davis. All right, with that being said, I don't know if there's a, any discussion. So I'm going to go ahead and call the question.
Excuse me, there is.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
All right. The floor is yours, sir.
The last time that we read this, there were some conversations back and forth and I thought we were going to make some changes.
Do you remember what they were about?
Uh, that's what I was hoping that we could maybe get.
You sure it wasn't the?
Are you sure it wasn't the municipal court?
Well, I know there was changes to municipal court one also, but I thought that there was timing and things like that that we were looking at.
I just remember there was a very long discussion about elements of the noise ordinance. I don't recall what it was, but I do recall Councilman Ferguson having some, wanted some additions and deletions.
So I, some of this, I remember being related to how this would be enforced. It wasn't so much about the ordinance itself, it wasn't about the law, it was about really the process of procedures around how it would be enforced. So having decimeters and standing outside someone's home, and the subsequent reporting that would come, and how, Director Farrell, you as a, and your code enforcement team would ultimately hold some, or hold someone to the law based on whatever processes you would take to go through that. That was my recollection. I don't know that there was any specifics to the ordinance itself, but more so about how it would be carried out and how it would be enforced.
I agree. I mean, that was my recollection too. I know we talked a lot about animal noises, how that is measured, but not like specific changes we need to make.
I mean, I don't know between 75 DVA and 80 DVA, and, you know. The floor is yours, Councilman Ferguson.
I mean, unfortunately, I do not have all the recollection of the last time we talked about this. I do remember that there were conversations about commercial and non-commercial and that sort of thing, and the timing being different, but I, I'm going to have to leave it up to your judgment.
We can always amend this later.
Leave it up to, I'm thinking we leave it up to his judgment, and if we need to change this at a later date, then we can do that.
Yes, Your Honor, yes, Councilman Ferguson, used to be in front of court all the time, I apologize. You can do a text amendment, as Councilwoman Ox said, if need be, working with the city attorney's office and the city manager's office, we can make those changes. Procedurally, we will establish the procedures internally as to how we address those concerns, working also with the local cop police, which will in fact, affect, allow them to enforce some of these portions of the ordinance within our jurisdiction as well.
Anyone else have any comments or questions for Director Farrell?
So if we enact this tonight, we approve this tonight, when do you foresee starting to really go out and try to enforce?
From my professional experience, normally, noise issues usually take place around holidays. So what's coming up? Memorial Day, Fourth of July, that's when you, you know, get those type of complaints, Labor Day, then it dies down in the wintertime until New Year's, and that's usually what we try to be as proactive as we can. Some of the things we've done in the past, look on Eventbrite for people having parties, or, you know, some kind of celebration, and try to be proactive enough prior to the event to have them come to our office, meet with zoning, to make sure they can even do the event outside, or have extra noise, you know, whatever the case might be, like, oh, here we're going to have a van, okay, well, that's great, but here's the process, you know. So I would say definitely, probably within the next week or two, I mean, we're probably looking like, because we, you know, we adopted tonight, I have staff looking for opportunities to address it and educate, remember, we're trying to educate them, so that means that that's an education process of meeting with them and trying to establish that. And of course, taking whatever issues that you may experience, as well as dealing with some of the other things on the zoning side from roadside vending and things of that nature.
And then are you going to have some type of way to educate citizens on what they should do if they are in the situation, like if they have a noise issue?
Oh, yes. So with that being said, you know, of course, depending on what type of issue it is, if it's parties late night, things of that nature, of course, we will definitely refer to Major Hurst and his team and make sure residents are understanding of that, because that is really, you know, what you do in your dwelling really is, you know, it's graduation time, right? So now people are having graduation parties, things of that nature, we're not going to just come out, because we understand that's a one-off most likely, but when it becomes what is considered to be a nuisance, which is every week, or such as some of the constituents stated, like there's a short-term rental that's having a legal party, you know, those type of things, then that's where we will address those accordingly to the property owner and with the residents. And also, we can work with our staff or communications to put some things out on social media as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, does anyone else have anything for Director Farrell? At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
We've already made a motion.
Where I did it, I'm sorry, it's been seconded. I can call the question at this point. Yes? Sorry, threw me off there, sir.
Bye-bye.
All those in favor of approval of an ordinance creating Chapter 13 nuisance, Article 3, noise of the city of Mableton Code of Ordinance and for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is item 12D, which is also a second read, this is consideration and approval of an ordinance creating Chapter 6, which is our municipal court in the city of Mableton. I think it may have already been established that there have been some questions and some things that was changed from the last version, so Madam Attorney, do you want to talk to us where this ordinance currently stays?
Yes, Mayor. So the version that's in the agenda in the council's package should show the changes. The ones in purple, you've seen previously, the ones that are in blue have been the adjustments since the last version that you've seen. Most are just formatting, non-substantial adjustments. One thing I did do is I did adjust this to indicate that the city manager, the city manager's designee would establish the court schedule. And the reason being is that some judges prefer night court, and you don't want a judge to set night court every week, and then staff has to stay for night court, and then you have your entire court department quit. So obviously, that would be a decision that would need to be approved by the city manager, as well as your court schedule is going to be subject to your contract, because until you get city space, it's going to be whatever you have agreed with, with the shared space, or with whatever entity that you agree to use to facilitate court space. So all the other changes are pretty minor. I'm just trying to see if there's anything else that was substantial. So if you just want to take another second to look through, but the request would be to approve, and then we, as the councilwoman indicated earlier, you always have the opportunity to amend as necessary.
I did see where in section 6.1, 6.1.6, so fines will not exceed $1,000, so the addition of the council being able to set fines, they would be limited by that $1,000 cap, correct?
That is correct.
I think that's state law, is it not?
Well, that's, so this was, I copied and paste this from your charter. So your charter actually sets fines and punishment, so this should be within your charter, but what I put in here is a provision that says nothing herein shall limit nor prevent the city council from setting fines, and that's because some cities, for certain infractions, do not want a certain amount to be exceeded. So they may put in the ordinance a fine not to exceed $200, or a fine not to exceed $50, and for some infractions, they, certain councils may find that the fines are too low, so they'll say the fines not to fall below this threshold. So this just provides clarification that at the council's discretion, they can by ordinance set what the fine is going to be.
And my last question is, I know you made the change where the city manager will be approving, I guess, their schedule. Is that typical, like say, for example, as Mableton continues to grow and get larger, that the city manager would have to approve the schedule? I know it says, "or designee," so would...
She did put in there, "designee," more than likely, the court administrator will work with the judge to set the schedule. What, and I really appreciate this, what the city attorney has done is made sure that I do have some say-so in it, because certain judges are part-time, and they may want to do night court, and I totally agree with the city attorney. I would be, kind of have, hope our contract with any municipal judge, we're not, unless the council decides. I wouldn't recommend a night court. That's a whole new game. Staffing is after hours, people have to come, and so I wouldn't want us to be subject to someone else's schedule when the city has needs, and so putting that clause in there really, to me, is a beneficial one. But the court administrator is the primary person that schedules the calendar with the judges, seeing where they're going to be available, when they can't, when they had to put in a judge pro temp, and that gets done, and that'll be done, obviously, if not, to me, I would designate the court administrator to do that. But this is to give me the opportunity, as the city attorney explained, to have some resistance against weekend and night courts.
And the city manager can also designate the judge, it's just it gives him the flexibility when the judge does something inconsistent with what he thinks is in the best interest of the administration to pull that authority back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this, counsel? I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion at this time for this.
I motion to consideration and approval of an ordinance creating Chapter 6 Municipal Court of the City of Mableton Code of Ordnances.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and duly seconded. I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of approval of an ordinance creating Chapter 6 Municipal Court of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no oppositions, this is approved, and we'll move forward with creating our municipal court in the city of Mableton.
That's a big deal.
That's good, that's good.
Wow.
Great progress, counsel. All right, let's continue to move on here, we've still got several more items to get through tonight. Items 12E is a consideration of an HR consulting agreement for council improvement with local gov HR guru LLC. It's a professional human resources consulting firm to assist with critical HR functions, including policy development, employee relations strategies, compliance with employee regulations, and organizational best practices.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm sorry.
You're acknowledged, ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'd like to respectfully ask the council to consider approval for the Human Resources Consulting Services Agreement between the city of Mableton and local gov HR guru LLC. This agreement will allow the city to engage expert HR support in critical areas, to include but not limited to policy development, employee relationship strategies, and compliance with employment regulations. Pending your questions, Mayor, or Council.
Thank you, I appreciate that, counsel. Floor is open.
I thought that we were moving away from, you know, contracting out our services.
We are, so our internal HR functions will be handled by the HR department. As a matter of fact, we're going out to market, I believe, in the next couple of weeks for HR director, we'll be posting for that. This, as you recall, we had a relationship with an earlier HR firm, but there was not a master agreement, and so if we had to do some type of activity, where was an investigation, where we had to do third-party, where we didn't want someone to feel they were being treated unfairly, biased, unfortunately, sometimes in employment, you have people that break laws, and they have certain rights, and they have to bring attorneys, and in something like that with special cases, we want, talking with Ms. Candace Fields, we want to be able to bring in an HR professional with local government experience that can come in and handle special situations. We've shown in our short, brief history that we've had a few situations that required some independent investigation, research, and then come back and report to the HR department, here's my findings, and that way, we know we have an independent report by a third-party, and then we can come back, talk with legal, and council now has a full scope that wasn't conducted by, and this is very similar to what a police department does with internal affairs. Internal affairs is kind of separate from operations, they don't let them operate, but instead of us having an internal affairs or a city government, they call it the inspector general, this allows us on a contracted basis to have someone come in and personal matters. So we're not contracting them to work, they won't be needed, unless there's a special situation.
I see, I see.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, because quite frankly, I don't, I don't get that from reading this, because the scope is very large, right? Leadership training, supervisory training, employment law training, all the way down to general human resources assistance. And then coupled with that, you have this compensation, which is $200 an hour, not to exceed 20 hours of work a week. So it starts to sound like this is staff augmentation.
There is occasionally, like we've done with certain instructors, I don't like to mention names, we may bring in outside instructors who are subject matter experts in the area to come in, not saying our staff couldn't do it, but this one is Dr. Tab.
Yes.
Yeah, well-known in local government, teaches at the UGA, well-respected among HR professionals, and so this is not just going to be, okay, it's time to get some work, we're paying somebody. For example, when we get rid of an HR director position, there's a good chance that Ms. Candace Fields may put in for it. She very well can't run a process that she's competing in. I'm in a position now with this contract, and I can call someone to oversee that process if our own HR lead is going to be competing. There may be some times we need to get some advice on certain sensitive situations, I don't want to talk about here openly, and we can call legal, legal tells us the law, but then HR can also do some extra research and give us some backup information, so even though this is spelled out, Mr. Mayor, very generally, I agree with you, it says...
Can I clarify?
Yes.
Yeah, so I actually rewrote this with that concern in mind. So I put it, I put two clauses in that I think would accommodate that, and the first is in subsection 1, and it says contractor shall only perform such services as are requested in writing by the city's manager, and within budget and authorized scopes. So that means that she has no authorization unless Bill puts it in writing that she can do that service. And then in subsection, I think it's nine, let me scroll down. Yes, in subsection nine, where it talks about the fee, I put in here that the city shall pay to contractor the $200 hourly rate as requested by the city manager in writing, so I just repeated, that it had to be a written request by the city manager for that service. And then I also put another catch-all in here where it says, "Under no circumstance shall she, shall the contractor perform more than 20 hours in any consecutive seven-day period without the express written consent of the city manager."
So, Mr. Manager, I have to ask then, do you plan on using this in strictly a consultive nature when necessary, or as staff augmentation for another part-time member of the HR department?
Not as staff augmentation, not as a part-time, for specific needs that may arise where I do not want to use internal staff. And when I say do not want to use internal staff, there will be reasons, conflicts.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, any other questions?
So if there becomes a need for this person organizational culture assessment, like that's going to possibly take more than seven days for them to come in and do that type of assessment, is that something that you then have to come back?
That's a great question, Ms. Ferguson, I'm actually glad you're asking that. This is a master agreement, which gives me the authority to carry out a task. If we're talking about a pay-in-class study or some type of organizational study, we would then go through our purchasing process, put out an RFQ or an RFP, have somebody assess, and that firm would do the work. That's something HR has already put into their budget for certain things. Occasionally, you want to look at the, have an assessment of your pay system, is it up to par, and other things, we would have to go out on RFQ on that. I would, this person would not, or this firm would not automatically get that work. It would be, I can tell you now in my mind, a very sensitive termination, a very sensitive investigation.
So, my last question is going to be, but you are the only one that has the authority to approve this person coming in?
The way the city attorney wrote that, which I appreciate it, first of all, the authority starts with the council, you could prove, obviously, the contract, once the council approves it, then I have the authority to execute per the way it's written.
And I also put in here another provision that says that he can also put in a stop-work order.
Yes, at any time.
So, stop services at any time, and that if that happens, the compensation will only be to work up until the date that he stops service.
I did not see a, a, a date on this in which it was to end, did I miss that?
No, you did not.
Is it for perpetuity?
I know since the remainder of the term of the agreement, but I didn't actually see an end date on the term, so...
So, the master agreement is a standing agreement, which allows me to give tasks. We have master agreement with Sumter, we have a master agreement with Roush.
Well, I actually took away the masters and changed it to this. So, this is the only agreement that you have, but I'll answer what your concern is.
I say that, Mr. Manager, because it says, this agreement will authorize the city manager to approve services performed by the contractor from May of 2025 through the remainder of the agreement's term.
So, this is, this is why there is no commitment, there's no long-term commitment. So, if you go to the, let me pull up the termination clause, yeah, so it says this agreement may be terminated by either party with or without cause by giving written notice at least 30 days. So, she's basically operating, or the contractor's basically operating on a month-to-month basis. And within that month-to-month basis, he has the authority under here at any point to do a stop-work order.
What's the distinction between that month-to-month and a master?
Well, she initially gave us a master agreement.
Uh-huh.
And I gave this back instead.
The language play on words, which is good, good legal stuff. A master agreement kind of sets a broad scope of relationships, which I can then pull out, do certain tasks. But our city attorney is very skilled, she has, I thought she just restricted me to some months, I'm like, what do you do that for? No, it's, I don't know when, you don't anticipate when things are going to happen. What you don't want to do is be in a situation where I need to take immediate action, and I got to wait for a council meeting. Our city has found itself in that situation a couple of times, and some people didn't want to act until they had a document signed, and it kind of delayed something that shouldn't have been delayed. So, you want that agreement in place, that if I have to execute it, I have it.
It was just the phrase, which says through the remainder of the agreement's term. So, if there's a remainder of a term, then that leads me to believe that there is an end date that's, yeah, that's there. I don't know if you wanted to clean up that...
Well, so, the term is going to be until you cancel.
As long as in effect.
Yeah, so you can keep her, you know, on a month-to-month, the only thing you can't do long-term is more than a year.
Right.
But a month-to-month basis, you can keep that into perpetuity, because you have the ability to cancel any month.
And I guess my last question is, this is coming out of the HR budget? Yes, okay. You're smiling, so that's a good thing. All right, council, any other questions on this before we move forward? No, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion that we...
I'd like to consider a motion for...
Consider HR consultant agreement with municipal approval with Local Gov. HR Guru LLC.
Is your, Michael? Uh-huh, okay. A professional human resources consulting firm to assist with critical HR functions, including policy development, employee relation strategies, compliance with employment regulations, and organization best practices.
Second.
Thank you, motion's been made and properly seconded. I'll forego any other comments unless anyone has any. Thank you, I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor of moving forward are voting in affirmative of the motion made by Councilwoman Oladipo, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, I think that was the last item we had for that, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item F, which is a first read for an ordinance creating Chapter 14. This is the animal control of the City of Mableton's Code of Ordinances. Madam Attorney, floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. So, this is actually first read, as the mayor indicated. This ordinance is part of our ongoing service delivery strategy negotiations and discussions with the county. The county, if you may, as you may recall, during the initial negotiation conference that we had, they enumerated in their slideshow a list of ordinances that they would request that the city adopt if we utilize their service arrangement for animal control. So, my request would be that you leave this as much-as-is without adjustment, because the county has pretty much said, if you want us to do the animal control services, which we do for several other cities, we have to have a level of consistency, so that we don't have to go back and figure out what your regulations are. We know across the board, if we do it for Kennesaw, they've agreed to adhere to what our standards are, if we do it for Mableton, they've agreed to adhere to what our standards are. So, if you have a change, they haven't foreclosed the ability to make a change, but if you do have a change, they, as part of the IGA that we'll put in place, they have to know what that change is, and they have to have, give you approval on it, and that's only because they're implementing. But if you get your own animal control services department, and you do it yourself, then obviously, you'd have more flexibility with what the ordinance states. So, this is first read, and like I said, if there's going to be any changes, you've given us authority to execute the animal control IGA, so we do plan to move forward with executing that, because that was one of the most non-controversial IGAs that we had with the county. So, just keep in mind that any changes that you would make, we would need to get a consensus from the county on to make that adjustment.
Floor is open, Councilman Ferguson.
The one question I have is, this all would go through, if there was a court hearing that had to happen, this is going through Superior Court versus...
Yes, they're going to take this completely through their processes. We can ask that it come through our processes, but if we do that, then we have to pay that cost. Otherwise, they will streamline this as they do for every other city that they do this for, as well as themselves, at no cost.
Okay.
Yes, for animal services.
Most of the violations on animal services are not city ordinances, some of these are state laws, these would be criminal. So, in our municipal court, we're going to only handle things that relate to our code of ordinances. If there's, it's rare, but anytime there's dog abuse, or unfortunately, someone does something to a pet that they shouldn't do, and they find pet abuse, they're going to a court for breaking a law, and that's not something that we necessarily would administer. So, as the city attorney explained, that's going to go through their court.
If there are no further questions, mayor, I think we can...
I only, I have one question, which is, are, is this IGA in line with IGAs that other cities have with the county, do you know? I mean, have we, have we looked at...
To like, compare?
Yes, ma'am.
I have not.
I can, so there's only one animal service, to my knowledge, in Cobb County, and so, all the cities, almost like the ones that have, they mostly use Animal One, they had circulated disagreement with all the cities, so it should be pretty uniform.
Well, that's my question, right? Is it, is it the same as all the others, I mean, just to say it simplistically?
You know that, what's the thing we're doing?
Yeah, I didn't look at it, so, one, there's no fees, so we know for sure we're being charged at the best rate.
Yeah, and that honestly wasn't around fees, because we get questions, right? Like, oh, well, now that we're becoming a city, what does this mean for animal control? Or can, you know, how does it change? And I'd like to be able to say, it's consistent, it's the exact way that county is handling it with everybody else, and there's no difference there. I simply want to be able to say that with a level of fidelity and truth.
The only major difference that I could conceive is if they allow the other cities to dictate what the regulations are, and that would completely shock me, given my interactions with the county, as well as given just from an efficiency standpoint, it would make it so difficult to enforce if every city that you enforce for has different regulations.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the difference it makes, and I know this sounds very basic and technical, but it is technically a difference, it authorizes a county to operate within our city limits. Other than that, nothing changes, same service, same thing they've done before, but now, we're given the permission, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, that they can provide that service within our city limits.
All right, thank you, council, any other questions about this? And this is a first read, so we'll not be voting on it this evening. Hearing nothing else, we will move on, thank you, madam attorney. I will go on to item 12G, which is a first read on updating Chapter 11, which is the environmental and national, natural resources of the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances. Madam Attorney?
So, mayor, so this is another that's similar to the one above, similar to the animal control, where this is the product and result of our negotiations with the county attorney's office, and what they have asked is, because the Cobb County Water Department will be handling the billing, the assessment, the enforcement, the water and sewer, they just want there to be a level of consistency with the regulations, so that when the department sends out a notice of non-compliance, they don't have to look in Mableton's code to see if we have something different. So, it essentially says, look, if we're going to give a level of continuity, we're going to charge the same rates, we're going to enforce the same requirements, we just need to make sure that you adopt the requirements that we have in place. So, this does this, this environmental ordinance takes pieces from multiple sections of the county's code that deal with water and sewer, that they've asked us to consolidate, put in place, and adopt as part of our agreement with them. And then they will, of course, collect the fee, but they'll also do the service work with that collection.
Thank you, then, madam attorney. Council, do you have any questions or comments related to this? I do, but I will, I will take them offline, because I want to dig into this a little bit more as it relates to land disturbance, but also the tributary protection area, and trying to understand how that, now that we have five, over five miles of Chattahoochee that we're now responsible for, I do want to, I do want to understand that a lot better than I do currently right now. So, I'll be following up, may have some additional questions that relates to that. Council, any other questions or comments? Thank you, madam attorney, we'll move on now to item 12H, another first read is the ordinance creating Article 5 subdivisions under Chapter 8 Buildings and Constructions for the City of Mableton Code of Ordinances. Madam Attorney, floor is yours once again, ma'am.
Yes, mayor, this again is part of that continuation of service delivery discussions and negotiations, the county isolating out which provisions relative to subdivisions they would like the city to put in place that deal with the water and the sewer component. So, this is just ensuring that whatever regulations you put in place are consistent with subdivision requirements as they relate to water and sewer within the entire county. And again, the request for the county would be, particularly the water authority, is that if you make any adjustments to this from their, the pieces that they've asked you to put in place, that you bring it to them first as part of the agreement that we have in place, or that we are about to put in place, that you've given us the authority to execute, to finalize and execute.
Does, does this comply with, with the current zoning stipulations that we have? And I'm also, I probably can't answer this now, but I'm thinking as we're still going through our comprehensive plan, outputs from that, I mean, this could potentially, well, couldn't potentially be changed, because this is an IGA with the county. Again, we don't have to answer it right now, but some of the stipulations in here, I would like to make sure that's in alignment with our zoning plan and our comp plan.
Yes, and currently, it aligns, because there are specific development standards with respect to your zoning, that they, as part of, you know, their willingness to enter into the service delivery in this capacity, they said you had to have in place, and fortunately, we had already put that in place. So, because you, in some, you adopted the county's development standards, because right now...
Yeah, but we did make some changes.
To the development standards?
We did not make changes.
Yeah, no, I'm not aware of any changes to the development standards that you made.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure, since we've already done that, we bring this through, that...
Yes, but in the future, if you take a separate direction from the county's development standards, and this agreement is still in place, you will have to disclose that to the county and make sure that they're in agreement with them.
Right, and that kind of goes to my question, like, how long is the agreement in place?
However long, it's the council's desire, but just keep in mind, you're not really, no city is in the water and sewer business in Cobb County, so that would be a substantial change in direction for you to assume. It would be costly, too, because you would essentially purchase the infrastructure or put your own.
Yeah, I'm not trying to take it over, I'm saying, I'm making sure that this is going to cover us for a while.
Yeah, as long as you're satisfied with the water and sewer service that the county's providing residents, this, I, my recommendation would be to keep this in place, 50, 100, if not, to perpetuity. It is a substantial undertaking, we have some cities that we represent who did go out and create their own utilities and infrastructure, and it is a substantial cost and undertaking.
All righty, next. Thank you, ma'am, council, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we will close out item 12, which is, and move on to other business decisions or business and discussions, which they are none. This takes us pretty much to the conclusion of our business for tonight. Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements or comments, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'm getting my list out.
Floor is yours, sir.
There is a, you may have gotten a notice, I had to check to make sure, the Jasmine has sent this out on May 16th at the Betty Gray Middle School, they're looking for volunteers to participate in Reality University. I hope you all got that link, if you didn't, let me know. Reality University is a program Communities and School does in the community that allows adults to come into the school that day, and the kids are given a scenario as if they were adults. They are, based on their grade point average, they get paid so much, they get a job, all of a sudden, they have kids, they have bills, and they got money, and these kids have to make decisions, and they end up at a certain place based on the decisions they've made. It's a very interesting program, but it really does give children, our young adults here in our city, a chance to see what it really means to have to manage money and make decisions as adults. So, if you can participate, I strongly encourage that, it's very helpful and beneficial when our elected are involved in our schools in that regard. I did hear some conversation about sometimes folks being concerned, but as a citizen and as an adult, this is something that I would encourage you to do. I've done it a couple of times myself, and if you can join it, it'll be appreciated. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Madam Attorney, any comments tonight?
No comments, mayor.
Thank you, madam clerk.
No comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Davis?
Just, we just celebrated Mother's Day, so happy belated Mother's Day out there, and just appreciate your mom. Our love and mine was still here, it's been nine years, but please appreciate your mom while you have her, because you only have one. So, take care of her and enjoy, and have a good night and a good week. So take care of her and enjoy, and have a good night and a good week.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oladipo.
Great comment, Councilman Davis, and I follow suit. Just want to wish all the mothers, whether you're a mom by birth, by choice, through community, or through a role you're playing in, you know, someone's life, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. I hope you all had a wonderful Mother's Day celebration, and we thank you very much for coming here tonight and spending your evening with us.
Thank you, Madam Percham.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out again. I know this was a, a pretty extensive meeting, a lot of information, but we certainly appreciate you for coming out. I, third, what the council said about mothers, you know, I hope you had a chance to relax and spend some time with your mom. My mom is here. Mom, I appreciate you, and...
We all appreciate you.
And just, just, I think it's, it's the hardest job in the world, I really believe that, on the planet, I believe, and we're just grateful for all that you do, and we just appreciate it. I do want to say, last week, we had an opportunity to go to celebrate the official groundbreaking of Chick-fil-A in District 3, and it was really nice, the city manager came out, the mayor, as well as Councilwoman Ock, in addition to a few officials from Cobb County. And I just want to give a special thank you to owner-operator Landon Bentley, as well as former Governor Rory Barnes, Chairwoman Lisa Cupid, and Commissioner Monique Sheffield, and everyone who played a part in, you know, bringing this ideation all the way to full commercialization, or soon-to-be commercialization. And so we just appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing the community growth within, not just District 3, but also the City of Mableton. We appreciate that. I do want to add, the IT Department recently has a customer service number, a main number for the City of Mableton, and I do want to share that. That number's 404-590-2511. So, you know, please contact that number. I'm excited to hear that we, we have that in place. And so I appreciate our IT Director for, you know, getting that, that up and started for us, and so certainly thank you for your patience and continued support as we continue to improve our communication systems, and we really appreciate that. And then I think that's all I have. Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to note, that's not a new number. The, the menu has changed a bit, but it should be the same number that people already have, hopefully. Keep using it.
Yes, keep using it.
Right. Counsel went out.
I'll keep it very short, just a couple city events coming up. Just a reminder, we have Food Truck Friday coming up, May 23rd, on Friday. It'll be start at 6 o'clock PM, and then, of course, the Mableton Day Festival. There'll be a fun run and other great things, so something to look forward to, and I hope you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Ferguson.
All I want to say is, I actually had the pleasure of going on Saturday and watching two young ladies. City Manager brought up that, I forget what it's called, what was the, the thing that you wanted people to volunteer at?
Reality University.
Yeah, Reality U. Well, these two young ladies are eighth grade and sixth grade, I believe, and they created a thing called Money Masters. And it was an amazing session, they had about 30 kids in there, and they were teaching the class, talking about income, talking about all different things that have to do with money. I am going to personally say that the next time that we, that they are going to do it, that I will sponsor a couple kids to go there, because I think it's that important. I'm talking with some folks over at Floyd and just other places, it's for 10 to 16-year-olds, but it's an amazing, amazing experience. They have a book that they put together, everything, it was, and they're just delightful kids. Their mom was there, dad was there helping, but, and some of the parents even stayed and even said, hey, I didn't know that. So it was very, very cool. I hate that I left out of the house without the book that I wanted to show you all, but it, it's called Money Masters, and I Got Bank, but it's a two-hour session that they do, and I, I was just excited to watch them. So I'll let you know when the next time they're going to be out there, and then we'll see who, how many, if we can fill up the seats. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Councilwoman Herndon.
Good evening, everyone. I thank and appreciate each one of you for coming out and supporting our meeting tonight. I have no comments, Mayor, so it's, safe travels home.
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have many comments tonight. I, I am continuing to be impressed and happy with the direction we're taking as a city. I think every meeting now is another milestone, is another, other thing that we're hitting off, you know, opening a new office and having new businesses coming in, adding new staff. Do we have any new staff here tonight, by the way? I don't think we have any, any new. But yes, continued progress. I know there's, it, it takes a while for this to happen, so I'm continually happy to see the progress that we've made. And I want to extend a message today that I, I had a meeting with Congresswoman Lucy Macbeth today at her, her district office here, and I'll just tell you, it was, it was an auxiliary, exhilarating meeting, it was an inspiring meeting with her, and I'll kind of pass along a message that she is just, in her own words, completely amazed at what we're doing here as a city and what we're able to make happen, and that she's proud of the progress, proud of the work that we're doing, and a continued ask to, which I loved, which was, let us know what you need to be successful. And so then my Chief of Staff and I unrolled our long piece of paper to say all the needs that we have for the city, and then she proceeded to tell us how we could, we could go about it, right? So there's, we, as I said to y'all many times before, the, the eyes of the state are on us, the eyes of the nation are on us as one of the newest cities in the country. We've kind of gotten somewhat used to new cities in, in the state of Georgia, but a new city across this country is something that in many states, it just simply doesn't happen. So there are a lot of people around the state and around this country that are looking at, at us, and so as, as sometimes you, you travel across the country or go to conferences, they know about the City of Mableton. So I always want us to remember that the work we do here, which sometimes may seem monotonous and a bit mundane, it is, it is very important. And I can tell you now distinctly that on Capitol Hill, there are people that know that there is a new city in the state of Georgia that's right off I-20, that's, that has Six Flags in it, that's doing a lot of good work. So I did want to pass that along, and with that being said, there's going to be continued work that we're going to have to do in the city. There are, there are more ordinance to come. I think what you're, hopefully, our residents are starting to see that they will put, we are putting together this framework, right, of, of how the city is going to be viewed by its citizens, but also how it's going to be viewed externally. We still have some more cabs that need to be put in place. We had a meeting today with Cobb Tourism about our Meet Mableton, which is coming very quickly, and so we'll have our own visitor and tourism authority in the city to what I feel complement the fantastic, amazing assets that we already have. And with that said, you know, the best is yet to come, right?
Yeah.
The best is yet to come. Thank you. With that, Mr. Manager, I'm, I am expecting that we're going to have to go into executive session, so with that, Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for real estate personnel and...
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for real estate personnel and legal.
Litigation.
Litigation.
I second. Thank you. All those in favor of going into executive session for real estate personnel, litigation, I'm forgetting that, in other purposes, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Thank you. We will adjourn into executive session. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being with us tonight. If you do not plan on staying here upon our return, have a safe trip home, and look to see you at our next meeting on May 28th. Remember, we will not have a meeting this Wednesday. Thank you.
All right, thanks, ladies and gentlemen, for waiting with us while we're in executive session.
Mike?
Thank you for waiting for us while we're in executive session. Definitely do appreciate it. The council and staff are back. We'd like, at this point in time, to entertain a motion to exit executive session.
Motion to exit executive session.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded by Councilman Ferguson. Counsel, do we have any business in front of us at this time?
Theoretically.
Okay. We're waiting still? All right.
I was just waiting. Yes, they don't have it.
No? What'd you send it to?
What number?
I thought you were sending it to the... I was sorry to... I sent it to the 4214.
What?
794214. Oh, 4214.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
All right.
I make a motion that we approve our... Authorized resolution to... What is this?
Yeah, it's missing the word "resolut..." So I move that we approve our resolution. I don't know if it...
So it's I move that we approve our resolution and then just the rest that you have?
I move that we approve our resolution authorizing a regulatory-related intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County.
Second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded by Mayor Protim. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of approving the motion made by Councilman Ferguson, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you. Counsel, any other further business in front of us this evening? Mr. Manager?
Let me make a motion to give the city manager a Mercedes Benz.
Budget is pending, sir. Budget is pending. If it's an EV, we might be able to talk about that. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and duly seconded. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.